Okay, welcome everyone to the June meeting of the Hadley School Committee. We are expecting Paul Pfeiffer and not expecting Ethan Percy, so we should have four out of five in just a moment, but in the meantime, welcome Tara and Christine. Annie, any changes to the agenda?
You're seeing it on your agenda, but I did remove the review of the preschool handbook. Ms. Winter can't be with us this evening, so we'll present that when she's available probably in July.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
And I'm sorry, the other adjustments to the agenda, these adjustments are always shaded in yellow. The agenda is live, but yellow means that they were, they were added to the agenda after it was posted over at Town Hall. Those shaded items do include item four, uh, four J, change of a job title. Item four K, approval of a job description, and item four M, a request for, uh, to utilize vacation during the summer.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so we're going to start with public comment. And as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes and we may or may not have a chance to respond to those items. But we are going to kick it off by having participants raise their digital hand if they're interested in making a comment. And actually, I don't see any members of the public in the group, in the Zoom meeting. But I'll just give it a moment in case anyone has a comment to make. Okay, no commenters tonight. Thank you. Moving on to presentation and discussion items, we're going to start with item A, superintendent summative evaluation. Annie, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So, uh, as you know, and Chris, you're familiar with this from being a teacher, but now you're on the other side of this. So, uh, the school committee is required to evaluate me, provide me the formative evaluation mid-year and a summative evaluation at the end of the year. The formative evaluation mid-year is essentially just to check in. At the end of the year, the school committee is required to rate me on each standard and then provide a summative overall rating. And those ratings are then submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. What I provided for you is a document that, uh, the link that says evaluation. And what that takes you through, on the first page, it just reminds you of what we're supposed to be doing here, what you need to do. Provide a rating in each standard and an overall rating. I've also provided you with the summative ratings for last school year. The overall rating and the rating in each standard from last school year. And then my progress report that I put together and in that progress report, the I, the comments in bold are me providing you an update on what we've done with each one of these things. As you can see, um, Chris, my goals are the actual standards. So by assessing progress on those goals, the school committee is in effect assessing my performance on the standards. So my goals are the standards, which makes it a little more manageable for the school committee. And so I'm happy to answer any questions about the document. I can do whatever, uh, the school committee is helpful to the school committee.
Well, first, Annie, I have to say, I really appreciate the format that you put it in this time around. I know you've given us updates on each item in the document before, but I just seems a little bit, uh, very closely, it, it just feels a little bit more clear that our ability to assess you is a lot, um, is, is made easier by this format. So thank you for that and including last year's evaluation. Um, and I want to say, first of all, that, um, we, um, well, I personally think you're doing a pretty phenomenal job and, um, I, um, really appreciated seeing, um, as much progress as we've made, um, on the instructional leadership side. And the addition of, um, as much grant funding as you've brought to the schools, um, I've really appreciated that a lot of your items here are rooted in surveying educators for their feedback as well as students and families. And to the extent possible that you've reached out and, um, worked with outside partners who could complement our own capacity, given our very small school. So your work with consultants and other organizations. And I would like to just, um, put out there my own feedback on your, uh, performance. I think, um, it's exemplary, um, in most every category. And I would say that, um, the standard three family and community engagement in particular, um, as we look at the great progress made this year through open houses and, um, world fair type, um, uh, events. I think that there's probably still work to do. I'm really glad that we're surveying families to get feedback and I'm really glad that we've, we have the school council thinking about the same kinds of things that, you know, we, uh, you know, really honing them into a strategic objective that is aligned with our, um, our, um, school committees. Strategic interests. I would say that that is like on track to be exemplary, but probably still proficient. And so I'll just start by putting out my own feedback there and, and that would yield an overall rating of exemplary, of course, but still, um, asking that we, um, get even better at family and community engagement. Um, I'd love to ask for Tara and Christine's perspective as well.
So just right off the bat, I, I agree, um, Humira, with everything that you said, um, overall exemplary. And I agree with, um, proficient on family and community engagement, but I do, you know, I, I think it's important, as you did, um, to point out how much improvement just this year alone we've had. And it's almost an unfair category, in my opinion. Because it's a hard thing to accomplish. Like, how can you become exemplary in this area where I feel like there's always room to grow? And how you communicate with the community and how you engage in the community. And it might be changing, you know, the way that, the way that you communicate and the needs of families, um, and students is always changing. So I always feel like, even though every area has room to grow, this one is particularly challenging, um, to really just say, that's it, you've done a, a, a great job. So, but, but I loved reading through just the changes that we've had this year alone. And one of them just being feedback from parents, um, after, you know, the, the open houses. I think that that went really well and it felt like, you know, not something that, you know, families kind of just zoomed through and met, but it became kind of like a community gathering and people hung out and kids at the elementary school, I didn't go to the high school, but the elementary school kids were playing kickball. There was music and families were socializing and it, it became much more of a social event. Um, and so I find that like a really huge success. I almost wish there was something in between proficient and exemplary there because I feel like it's better than proficient. Um, but there's always room to improve. And then, hold on, I have my other screen open. Um, I did, you know, that first, that first category that you also touched on, um, Humira, instructional leadership. You know, in, in particular, I, I feel like, I feel like our administration and you, you being the leader of that, Annie, is really good at getting feedback, feedback from families, feedback from students, particularly at the high school level, and feedback from staff. Um, and more importantly, you don't just get that feedback, you, you do something with it. And that's where this shows in here. Um, I feel like even just thinking about going through negotiations this year, there was some serious headway, hearing where staff felt they needed, um, you know, changes and what they needed for changes. Um, and administration, um, was really able to make it work and put it into play. Um, and hopefully next year, it, it makes it something that is more manageable for staff. And, you know, increases their satisfaction and makes their day more manageable. So, um, you know, I, I think it's important just to point out that, you know, not only are these things done, but you seek input from others and you value their input, um, from all parties, all stakeholders involved, you know, and you listen. Um, and I hear a lot of that feedback from, from parents as well. You listen and they're always so surprised when they get a response from you and a response so quickly, um, or that you knew who they were, or, you know, those are all really positive things. So I agree with the overall exemplary.
Christine.
Of course, I reiterate what, you know, what both of you said. In terms, in terms of communication with the community, again, we've just come off of some seriously unprecedented times. So the fact that what we seem to have pulled it off smoothly, that, um, the community seems to have appreciated all the work that you've done, I think says a lot. And I, I think that as a, as a school administrator, you're very accessible and people enjoy that. They enjoy that you take in, you know, a personal interest. It's not the same as, you know, a lot of, I mean, larger systems, larger towns. I mean, people, people find it intimidating to approach administration. Uh, and I've never, you know, people feel very comfortable, um, in communicating with you, the newsletters. I mean, you've worked very hard to, uh, connect with the community. So I, I think, you know, Annie knows how I feel. I, I think she's doing a wonderful job.
So thank, I want to thank all of you for your feedback. That's, uh, I appreciate it deeply and it's extremely generous. Uh, I, I agree, like the work in family and community engagement is never done. I'm grateful for the school committee for helping me with that. Chris, I know you're really enthusiastic to, to try to do some work in that space. Humira, the idea about the, the community fair last year. Tara, Ethan and Paul always like getting that information to me from members of the community, but there always is room. I, I don't know that I would ever be satisfied, uh, with that because there's always more. And I, I don't, I don't engage every group equally well and I'm keenly aware of that and I aspire to do that, but I just know that's not the case right now. So thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it. And I, I want to be very clear that what a superintendent, I believe the job of the superintendent is to create the conditions where talented people can do. I'm sorry, I'm at school committee. Sorry, someone's leaving the office. Where talented people can do good work, where you recruit and retain talent. So fostering those conditions means making sure people have the resources to do the work well, that they feel that they have room to express their ideas and act upon those ideas. And this isn't, I'm not being disingenuous when I say this, everything that on this summary, I promise you, anything on that summary that made you go, wow, I can't believe we did that. I assure you that that was the work of teachers collectively and individually, you're building principals, this director of special education and our new SEL and TSS coach. So I really am the recorder of other people's work. I will say I get a lot of grants, which sometimes helps with that work. But, um, and so I, I, I just want to make sure that credit goes where credit is due. I appreciate the kind things you've said about me, but it's, um, it's simply creating the conditions where very talented people do really good work. So thank you for that. You need to vote on standards and the overall rating.
Terrific. Um, and please do extend our thanks to your extraordinary team. We recognize that you've assembled an incredible, um, cast of characters who is extraordinarily competent at their jobs and that you are an incredible mentor to them. And, um, and that is, um, is demonstrated by the consistently high praise that you get from, um, a whole stakeholders, including us. So thank you again for all of your hard work and dedication to us. Do I hear a motion for, um, a, an overall rating of exemplary? Annie, does, do we need to spell out the individual standards?
You said standards one, two and four exemplary and standard three proficient. Is that correct?
Correct. That's right. So a motion for overall rating of exemplary and a standard one, two and four rating of exemplary and standard three rating of proficient. Um, and getting there, almost there. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, go ahead. A second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. All right. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the second item on the agenda, facilities audit and capital plan update.
Yes, this is an update, not an action item. We met with the reps from Colliers. I think this predates, uh, your time on the school committee, Chris. So, uh, Colliers came out and did a facilities audit. And we met with them because the, our next, uh, question is, so what are the next steps? They are sending us a proposal to be owner's project manager for, they'll send us a proposal that to be the OPM that would help us, A, do the timeline, like a 10-year timeline, which projects and which order. And then once the school committee were, if you, when you agree to their proposed timeline, uh, suggested approach, the OPM would be responsible for doing all the bids, writing the bids, opening the bids, um, and taking care of overseeing on your behalf, on our behalf, the work that is being done. So I anticipate that we should have a proposal from them in July. And depending on what that proposal is, we may then have to go out and seek other proposals and quotes, depending on the cost associated with that. But we'll see what comes in and I'll share it with you in July.
Great. Um, Annie, I have a quick question on that. Does their proposal include the, um, any, uh, advice or counsel they might provide for, as we apply for MSBC?
Yes.
Grants?
Yes, it does. So one of the people on the call, Chris and I were on the call together. And one of the gentlemen on the call is kind of, that's his specialty at Colliers, is liaising with the MSBA. So, um, and with that in mind, they're also keenly aware of when we were last funded, what things were likely to get funded for. So that's part of what the OPM does. Yeah.
Terrific. And do you need a, uh, that you don't need to vote for that?
It's just updating you because I know you folks, for good reason, were saying, okay, now what next? We saw a facilities audit, what next? So when the proposal comes through, you'll get a copy of it.
Glad to see that's moving forward. Okay, item C, breakfast lunch price proposal fiscal year 23 presentation.
That is Chris. Chris, my friend, I think you're co-hosted. There he is.
Me.
Hi, Chris, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, so yeah, you had, um, a copy of this included in your meeting package. I'm just frantically trying to open it up myself here. Um, let's see, lunch proposed. So, basically we're, we're required to charge a certain amount for these meals. That's in the first column with minimum allowed. The next column is the current price that we're charging and the proposed price in the end is what we were looking for in terms of, um, increasing the price to, to bring us to basically, um, where the, where the cost of the meals actually are. So we weren't losing money on the meals. The two adult meals basically include, um, meals tax on that. Without meals tax, it would be, you know, roughly seven percent less than what that is. So not a huge amount of money, but what that does is it puts us, you know, right in the ballpark of, um, of covering the cost plus the meals tax. And we also tried to make it where we weren't having a price like a dollar sixty-four. Because what a disaster that is, quite honestly, for everybody to charge a dollar sixty-four for lunch. Or, you know, two seventy-three for the adults and it would be two seventy-three for a minimum amount, plus the sales tax, which would put it, I think it was two nine, two dollars and ninety-something cents. So we rounded it to three dollars just to also make life easier for both the people in the, um, food services department and for the, the students and the parents who are paying for it as well. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this. I can certainly answer them.
I don't have any questions. Um, Tara and Christine, um, questions from you?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, um, I, uh, we, uh, the original prices are really, really low. And, um, you know, with inflation, it makes sense that we are going higher and there's still, when you look at, you know, three dollars for, or three dollars and fifty cents for lunch, you still really can't beat it relative to other things on the marketplace. So I, I, I definitely feel like this is, um, although it feels like a jump relative to where we are today, it's still pretty low relative to marketplace prices for food, I think. And, um, I, I really appreciate the rounding up, um, or at least the rounding to the whole dollar. I wonder, just before moving forward with the motion, does rounding to the nearest dollar for most of them, except for the three fifty, I see, uh, the student lunch item, um, does that, is that something we would have ordinarily done or would we have gone up in quarter increments historically? That's what I, I recall from past lunch updates and I wonder whether by going this whole dollar amount, whether we might be stabilized there for a while.
Well, in terms of the whole dollar, I think the only one that really, um, would apply there would be the student breakfast where we, I suppose could have gone to one seventy-five instead of the two dollars. The two dollars was actually kind of a decrease from what, uh, our food services director had requested based on current pricing. So that's why we brought it to the two dollars. Um, the actual meal price is actually a little bit higher than that. But we kind of pulled it back so as to not have a, a large increase in the cost. The other ones, the adult meals certainly rounding to the, the dollars just made sense because again, you know, with two dollars and ninety-something cents with tax for the breakfast and, and it was again pushing five dollars, um, with tax again. You know, for the adult lunch, we just thought it made sense to do that, but really the breakfast was the only one where I guess we jumped up from a twenty-five cent increment to bring it up to a, a round dollar amount.
And one quick question, nothing has changed in terms of, because obviously I haven't been there in a while, but nothing's changed in terms of what they get for lunch or like, does, do they still have the salad bar and all the other? So everything's still the same in terms of what they're getting for their lunch?
So that's correct, yeah.
Okay. And I'm just curious about this, um, this, uh, the, the difference between the student lunch pricing and the adult lunch pricing. Does it mean a different quantity or is it just a different tiered pricing?
I do believe that the adult meals are slightly larger than the kids' meals. I've never gotten one myself, so I don't know. But I, I think I was told that that was the case. They get a little bit more, um, than the average student meal does. So, um, it, it's a little bit higher. The other part of that, of course, is that a, a lot of the, the costs of the student meals are subsidized by the government. We can't subsidize the adult meals. That's, that's kind of a convenience offering for the faculty rather than, you know, something that we, we have to provide more or less.
That's right. That's, I forgot about that point. Okay, terrific. So would someone like to make a motion to approve this, um, proposed pricing?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, um, moving to item D, return funds to town reimbursement for COVID absence covered by, with Esser funds.
Yes, so you already agreed to do this. What we have to do tonight is the amount. The state program that reimbursed the town for COVID-related absences for employees ended, uh, beginning mid-March. We've had people who had COVID-related absences and, uh, as a, one to help our employees and it was a legitimate use of our grant funding through Esser and in turn then to help the town. We said that we would use Esser funds to reimburse those absences. And the amount, which you have to approve the amounts tonight, that we will then return to the town, is twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, the spending of twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars of Esser funds to cover COVID-related absences?
So moved.
And, all right, all in favor?
I.
I. All right, motion passes. Moving to the next item, item E, second and final reading of policy KF building use. This is something that we've seen, um, actually over the last two meetings, heard about in the two meetings ago and, and presented to you last meeting. Um, and the only items that have changed, um, and Tara, I'll call on you, um, for this, there's two items that changed.
Yeah, so we added, um, in the examples for the descriptions of, um, nonprofit, have youth organizations, parent school programs and other youth activities. We've, um, called out in the examples to use Cal Ripken, um, in addition to other things listed. Um, and, and these are just examples. This is not an exclusive, um, list. Um, and then the other thing that was changed was, um,
Hours.
Seven, yeah. So custodial fees, we've removed the, um, hours listed and changed it just to designate during normal staffing hours. And those are the only two changes.
Great, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve policy KF building use?
So.
Motion?
Seconded.
Terrific, um, all in favor?
I.
I. All right, motion passes. Moving on to item F, sale of used textbooks, textbooks, Annie.
Uh, it's actually, Chris, you're back up. He's handling this one. Unless, are you there, Chris?
He's here. He's just waiting for things to kick back on. All right. So the textbooks, yes, we have a number of textbooks at the elementary school. Um, I'm looking at a list here. It looks like around a hundred and sixty of them, um, that are no longer being used. And so they were looking to dispose of these books, uh, in two ways. Number one would be to, um, offer them back to the publisher and see what we could get for them and the other, and, and you know, anything that the publisher would be interested in, obviously, uh, we'd receive the funds for them and the funds would go back to the town because these are all items that were purchased in prior years. And, um, then, you know, whatever they had no interest in, well, we would just dispose of, they would, they would be recycled because, um, our trash pickups do recycle items like this, so they would be disposed of in a proper manner. Uh, but we need your approval because they are disposal of assets.
So we are disposing of them? We're not selling this back to the textbook manufacturer?
Anything that they're interested in will sell. They don't want them all.
I see.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Christine.
You said the money goes back to the town or does that go back to the school to purchase or pay for the new, new textbooks, obviously, or additional textbooks?
Yeah, it goes back to the town. Anything from a prior fiscal year goes back to the town. We can't keep those funds. And this would be basically something that was bought in a prior fiscal year. So, uh, so yeah, they have get it.
And do you need a motion for this, Annie? Okay, do you hear a motion to, um, sell used textbooks? And, and dispense of the textbooks that were, are no longer being used?
I'm moved.
Okay. Second. All right, all in favor?
I.
I. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item G, acceptance of donations from Fitzgibbons family for DC field trip.
Yes, so the school committee always needs to accept donations. That's a school committee policy. A parent fundraising group for the DC trip worked very hard to do a bottle and can fundraiser with the Redemption Center. And unfortunately, it appears that the Redemption Center was not quite, um, as up and up as they had hoped. And we're very appreciative, the Fitzgibbons, without being asked, um, subsequently decided to donate six hundred dollars for the DC field trip to benefit all families. um, subsequently decided to donate six hundred dollars for the DC field trip to benefit all families. And the school committee needs to accept a donation, it was incredibly generous, unsolicited and incredibly generous.
Very, very generous, thank you to the Fitzgibbons family. Do I hear a motion to accept the donation?
So moved.
Um, seconded.
And all in favor?
Aye. I just had a question, and thank you to the Fitzgibbons family for that as well, that's very, very generous. Um, I just wanted to make sure we don't have any students that are finding it a hardship and are unable to participate at this point due to funding, do we know?
No, so the, the field trip has already essentially had, had uh, has come and gone on this DC field trip, right? This is already occurred, yeah, so they just stepped in to a hole that had been created there, so, no, we didn't let, yeah.
Many thanks to the Fitzgibbons family.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item H, final school year, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three calendar, Annie?
Yeah, you guys have voted on this, this will be your fourth vote, so really it is the final one, I'm thinking, this is the final one. So the only thing that's changed, I told you that uh, Jen Dowd wanted to speak with her faculty about, does it make sense for them also to have that collaboration time? So if you recall, we've already approved, and these will be on the same days, which will make it easier for parents to remember. Hopkins Academy would have a one-hour delayed start to allow time for teachers and our class, and our educational support professionals to collaborate together. And now, on those same days where the students at Hopkins, all the students ride the bus together. So Hopkins starts at the elementary time, more or less, you gotta drop off one first than the other. They start roughly an hour later, and then that same day, everybody's dismissed at Hopkins time. Gus goes and picks up the elementary students so that the elementary teachers have this collaboration time, and have the kids as aware of that and is prepared to start at um, an outward career, essentially at the elementary school, to help parents with that as well.
Terrific. Annie, I just have one question, um, and that is, will, um, is there a plan in place that the task force is going to prototype alongside this pilot? All the mechanisms that we want to, to design sort of safe uh, interactions? I think we talked about promerito, um, volunteers or other strategies. Um, I see that there's one a month, so ten opportunities to prototype and, and fine tune. We, we'd love to hear about that at some point, um, and I'm, and I'm wondering that, that plan is in place, yes?
Yes, and um, I am happy to bring to a future school committee meeting um, what that looks like in terms of, so we have talked about having promerito students as kind of like ambassadors on the, on the buses too, and then depending, just as we do now. Sometimes we may decide that a particular route would benefit from an additional adult, we do that now. Um, so also, as soon as uh, Ms. Hoff has done all of the runs and what those look like, that will also factor into the kind of things that we may want to consider to ensure that our bus runs are quiet and, and relaxing and enjoyable.
Wonderful. Great, thank you. Do you need a vote on this?
I do, because I hope this is the last time I've changed the calendar, and then parents at the elementary school were, um, well, Tara, you probably got this notice, parents at the elementary school did receive something from Jen as a heads up, because we knew now, nobody's gonna read an email now saying, guess what, this is happening. So they got it during the school year, it had draft written across it, we'd like to take the draft watermark off and just say, this is the calendar and keep it on the website.
All right, terrific. Um, so do I hear a motion to approve the final school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three calendar?
Um, I'll motion to approve, and Annie, I just wanted to add in real quick, though, when we send out that um, um, updated notification to parents, um, that this is the official calendar, just letting the parents of the Hadley Kids Program know that there will be after-school. I know that after the email was sent out from Jen, I did hear chatter about like, well, is there gonna be after-school? What's gonna be happening? Um, so just clarity that they, parents that do after-school those days will still have that um, available to them. And I motion it.
Yes.
Thank you, Tara. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item I, designation of school committee member for bus driver negotiations. And um, uh, Ethan and I volunteered to do this, um, when we were discussing school committee uh, commit, uh, committee assignments. Um, Annie, what is the action here?
There is no action, just an update, so we're waiting, the school committee legal counsel is in contact with the uh, representative from, this is the UPS EU, you mean, this is not the HEA, that's why it's separate negotiations. And um, and then we'll look to set up a date, or just update folks on where we're at.
Terrific, thank you. Moving on to item J, this is the change of the title, network administrator to technology director. And uh, it's like a um, a welcome to this century, in terms of like,
I imagine this is Description, yeah, the job description constantly aligns with the tech director. So it's really, that's the only thing that changed, is that, it's a, it's a tech director. But it is a job description, a school committee approves job description, so I would need school committee approval to make that title change on the job description.
Great. Um, are there any questions or comments on this before we motion it?
No questions.
Okay. All right, um, do I hear a motion to approve the name change to technology director?
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Uh, moving on to item K, approval of job description, SY district cook, summer custodian, Annie?
Yeah, so the SY is for school year, and this is essentially taking two distinct positions and uh, creating one job description. You may see more of these, so the short of this is, we have our district cook, has worked in the district for a long time, in the cafe, also works as a, in, in the summers, is a custodian in our buildings. And that technically uh, would present a problem with the ethics law, which says that even though it's one check and it's one department, you can't have two different jobs. Um, so in order to protect our employees, because these violations rest with the employee, it's not an institutional violation. The employee spoke with the ethics commission and gave them permission to speak to me, and the lawyer at the ethics commission said, if there's one job description, um, you, you can hear in my voice, not all of this makes sense to me, I'm not burdened with the legal education, and it doesn't matter if it doesn't make sense to me, but if it is one job description, no longer violates the ethics law. Um, so this is a new position, it's, yeah, but do know that I am, and I, I do want this stated publicly, should anyone have any questions or this ever come up, with the school committee's attorney, we are thinking through every single place where this is, would apply. And so in dribbles and drabs, you're going to see this. With our teachers, who may, for example, collect money at, at, at an athletic event, um, we can add in our unit A and unit D contracts, we can add a line, you know, school committee has to sign that, the union has to sign it, that would protect the employees. For people who aren't in unions, that might work in the summer, collect money at an athletic event, you may see more of these, because we certainly don't want to prevent people who are trying to earn extra money in-house from those opportunities. So that's what this is, and that's why you're seeing it.
In fact, we should make sure they have every opportunity to supplement their income with additional opportunities. So whatever it takes to make it legally sound, um, even if it is a um, job description that seems kind of quirky, being a cook and a custodian at once. Um, any comment from my colleagues on this?
Uh, no, just thank you for um, going through this and ensuring that the employees are well taken care of, I guess. So thank you for your attention to it.
Indeed. All right, and do I hear a motion to approve this new job description?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item L, reclaiming focus, increasing attention and engagement and reducing, reducing distraction. Um, HA staff feedback, Annie?
So tonight, I just want to let you know what we're thinking about and considering. And what I'm really looking for here is um, input around when it, uh, when you think it makes sense to try to schedule a parent Q and A. There are a lot of links in there, so one of them, the increasing focus link takes you to a excerpt from the book Stolen Focus. Stolen Focus is a book that all the administrators are reading, uh, a handful of teachers at Hopkins I know have started reading it. This is an excerpt from that book. Um, and uh, we've been asking ourselves, we've noticed, we've certainly noticed, even more so this year, which probably makes sense, because students spent a lot of time, uh, more time at home or on devices, they needed these devices, in many cases, to communicate with one another during the pandemic. So what we've seen is, we observe a, in some cases, a tremendous amount of dysregulation that ensues when students are checking social media during the day, or they're texting, or getting texts, or having these experiences that really disrupt their ability to attend to the task at hand, which is be in school. Um, and this is not, I really want to underscore this. So what, what, what we are asking ourselves is, is there anything we can do in our environment to make it easier to support students in trying to focus, attend to, to the task that is in front of them, to pay attention to the people who are in front of them, to what is happening in real time? What can we do to help them do that? Um, we also noticed that even students are, so, so when asking that question, what can we do? We started looking at various resources, Stolen Focus is one resource. I've also included some of the research around, it, it's, and it's very preliminary and nascent, but some of the preliminary research around, and, and I really want to underscore, it's not conclusive, so I'm not coming in here pushing a position. Um, but uh, there's enough research to say that these devices may in fact, and how we interact with these devices, it isn't just phones, it isn't just social media, it's about multiple tabs open on a screen, uh, starting the email, coming back to emails, about interruptions. There's enough research out there to say, this is worth paying attention to and doing more research. And so we said, is there anything that we can do to make things better for students? And even students who don't become visibly and observably dysregulated during the day, uh, staff will report, and, and I can see it, that it's like, there's, there's always, the, every muscle fiber and ear is kind of leaning toward waiting for that thing to buzz, or that wristwatch to get my attention, or something to get my attention. So we looked at what Chickaby Public Schools did last year, and um, also what some districts around us are considering right now, and they're beginning to talk with their school committees, which is using, the company's called Yonder, but using these pouches, that students essentially are issued a pouch. The pouch has a magnetic closure, so it's not that it's impossible to get to the phone, but you would damage the pouch if you did that, it would be clear that you had done that. Students enter um, the school, they get a pouch that they've decorated, it's their pouch. They place their phone in the pouch, there are pouches that are large enough to take phones and smartwatches and earbuds. Also, I believe that you can put the phone in the pouch, and by putting the phone in the pouch, it stops communicating if you have a smart wristwatch, right? It's all about reducing interruptions. Um, and so the students then place their device in the pouch, they seal the pouch, it's like a magnetic scanner. They put it in their backpack, they go about the day, Chickaby uses staff in the morning, tables are set out, kind of, they're very neatly, you know where to get your pouch, you do this, you go out about your business. At the end of the day, there's almost like a scanner, scan the pouch and it opens the pouch up, you take out your devices again. Um, so this is something, the, aside from the resources, the HA staff feedback, you can see how the staff felt about this, they're overwhelmingly in support of this, they certainly, there was good discussion and questions. I really want to underscore that this is not about, um, for me, this isn't about punishment. I mean, I can imagine some people might say, well, just, just punish the kids who use their phone in school, they're not supposed to use them anyways, just punish the ones who use their phone in school. And for me personally, this isn't about this at all. I'm worried about the young people, I'm worried about the adults in this district. I can't tell you how many times, it, not just in school, everywhere I go, that a person cannot have a conversation with me, sustain eye contact without turning to some device, attempting to quietly type while they're also talking, without tapping their wrist, without grabbing their phone. Um, and if, in fact, any of this preliminary research, if the concerns laid out in Stolen Focus, if even only some of those turn out to be true, it's enough for me to say, I mean, I just feel so strongly, I owe it to the students in this district that they get a reprieve from that. I, I owe it to them to create conditions where there isn't this corrosive sustained attack on their attention. I just feel really strongly about that. And one final anecdote. I uh, chaperoned a, a field trip, and a Hopkins student was in my car when we went to UMass. And when I talked about this concept, and I shared with the student, this, I was reading the book Stolen Focus, and I said, you know, I wonder, again, this is one student, but it just struck me. I said, I really wonder if in ten or twenty years, you guys, meaning the students here at Hopkins now, if you guys won't be looking at me the way sometimes I look at my parents' generation, because when I was filling my gas tank as a teenager, it was blood and gasoline. And now I wonder like, who thought that was a good idea, right? But, and I wonder like, where are the adults in that? I said, I wonder if you guys are gonna look at us and um, ask yourselves, where were the adults when I couldn't put this phone down? Without missing a beat, the kid said, absolutely. So we'd like to explore it, and I'd like to have a Q and A with parents about it. And I'm, uh, so this is more not like a vote here, it's more, again, asking around the Q and A, if it's something we'd like to do as part of a school committee meeting, um, or something separate. And um, and then I'm just open to any concerns or feedback or thoughts folks might have.
Annie, first, I really want to thank you for taking this issue up and um, in a very thoughtful way, um, looking at all the issues, there's a lot of science about cell phones and the impact of social media in particular on young teenage brains. And um, I think this is a great conversation to have with um, the community, with parents. I um, and I would, I would have to say that I'm probably a, I'm, I've come full circle on this myself personally, where I was a big proponent, I am a big proponent of technology and the use of technology and getting our students technology savvy, and not shying away from giving them um, real-world experiences in today's environment, and that is being able to use a phone responsibly. But I think that even adults need some nudging about how to put it down, how to not let the, not, not let it become a distraction to the very present opportunities to connect with people in front of you and to, to learn deeply. So um, I'm really excited that you're starting this conversation. I would welcome it to be in a school committee meeting, I think it would be nice to have an option, a school committee meeting, and maybe one other touch point where someone might not be comfortable in a school committee setting, um, coming out and, and speaking um, their truth, maybe it's a, an open forum, perhaps no one would attend, I don't know. But um, maybe it's a separate Zoom call, perhaps it's a, like a month that you make yourself available for comment through your newsletter, and people feel free to connect with you. Um, I welcome others to comment. Tara, Christine, other thoughts on this?
I mean, I've, I've obviously watched, you know, I started teaching really before, and we had flip phones, that was about it. Or we had those little tiny ones, nothing like we have now. And you can see, as And you can see as you're teaching, especially, you know, if there's something going on, if there's some, I'll, I'll use the Johnny Depp Amber Heard thing that all the kids were enthralled with. It's, it's just, they're not paying attention because they're waiting to get into the hall to find out what happens. They're not, they're not, you know, consciously aware that their attention is elsewhere because they're still, they're present, they're not looking at their phone, they're looking at you, but their mind is somewhere else. And it's because they have it there to go run and look at. And I, I think, you know, sometimes we ask a lot of our students in terms of, you know, the they, they don't necessarily always have the, the maturity to go along with the technology that we're entrusting to them. And so I think that it's worth, it's definitely worth trying. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I think we owe it to them to try to see if this doesn't increase their awareness of what's going on around them and even they, you know, again, some of the students are unaware that they're not thinking or they're not paying attention because they have other things going on. I'd be really curious to see how those students feel, you know, if, have their grades gone up? Do they feel that they're actually listening better? So I, I think it's a great idea.
Tara? So I'm, yeah, I'm very supportive of this and I guess a, a couple of things. You know, I'm sorry, Nora, no. So I like the idea of the public forum and I like the idea of school committee being involved. I think that we've generally had pretty good responses with surveys, even if it's simple questions with an option to do open comments. I do feel like sometimes people are more willing to put in those comments into those surveys. I apologize.
Don't worry, it's not, it's not at all distracting. Toddler in the background.
I'm just so glad she's not on a phone.
And so I know, and I'm saying, I'm trying to get her on the technology. She'll do it more if I tell her to stop, I'm sorry. So I think that parents sometimes can feel more comfortable because oftentimes I've noticed that parents can be pretty outspoken in the surveys and seem pretty comfortable and maybe a little bit more reserved in the forum. So I like the idea of two different options of ways to respond. And I, I, I think that that might be a good way to get that open communication rather than just Annie being available for a month's time. I think maybe just funneling that through a survey might be a good idea. And, you know, another thing just to point out, I think that it's important to recognize that you're not making the suggestion to take away phones and not allow them at school, right? So children still have access to them before and after school because they've become an important necessity and means for parents to communicate with their children. And so that is recognizable and parents and students still have a way to get in touch with each other during the school day because we have a central office. So if there's an emergency, parents know how to reach their children at the school. A phone is just not necessary. And I think this is important because our kids are growing up in a different time right now than we have grown up. I mean, my two-year-old was basically born knowing how to use an iPad and knowing how to unlock my phone better than my mom's 75-year-old husband. And so I think it's really important for us to be the, the good example and, and provide them with the, the, you know, not lesson, but, but the lead by example and having the phones away and it showing them the importance of paying attention and not having them available to them all the time and that your focus needs to be elsewhere. And I can tell you at a previous job that I worked at, there actually had to be a policy put in place around phones because people at a work site, and these are, these are grown adults and professionals, and a policy had to be in place around cell phones and that nobody could have their cell phones on them because it became a distraction and mistakes were getting made and work productivity decreased. All, and again, these are grown adults that wouldn't be able to put their phone down for the same reasons Christine laid out. They're too attached to what's going on. They don't want to miss that information or planning what's happening after work or whatnot. So I think it is important. So I'm super supportive and I'm, I'm curious to hear feedback from others on where that goes.
I like that idea. I can also include in the survey. So I'll put together a draft of a survey and I think I can have all of you take a gander at it. And I think I can, I'm pretty sure I can. If I can't, I'll ask for a representative to, you know, somebody to do it. I just don't want to violate an open meeting. Yeah, that's the only thing I'm trying to avoid is not accidentally violate open meeting. But so it either I'll send it just to Humira to look at everybody who, if I can send it to everybody and it doesn't constitute deliberation, I will. And yes, so thank you for your support in our exploring this. I, I really just so desperately, what I personally observed, again, is anecdotal, and this is not limited to our students. I fear that many, many people have lost the power of choice. It, it's, it is an unconscious act to be interrupted by one's wrist, to have a notification on one's phone, to have something, time and something like that. And I just want to give young people back the power of choice. And so I'll keep you posted and I'll minimally get a survey to you, Humira.
Perfect. Just one more important comment. And that is they, we, we just talked about the fact that it will be available at the start and the end of the day. I also want to point out something really important, which is that it's even available in the middle of the day, although a magnetic part of the pouch would break, it's still available in the case that something urgent were to happen and yeah, we, we, our policies are, we would design policies that were in place to safeguard any extant circumstances that would require a student to be able to quickly access. It's, it's, it's still in their backpack. It's not somewhere tucked in a locker like some schools have it. It's on their person. And so for that reason, I really like this, this particular offering that you've shared, this company that Chicopee uses. So thank you for that. And, and I couldn't agree with you more. One, school committee of discussion, inviting people as well as a survey, but the survey, I would imagine would be the primary means to get that feedback. So thank you. You don't need anything for us, from us.
Wanted, you know, folks, you may start hearing from folks in the community with questions about it. I think you have certainly enough resources and people can access the website. They can look at some of those resources and understanding everything you laid out, still on their person. When we have at one of those, hopefully the school committee meeting, the chief or lieutenant cook or sergeant Romano might be available then to specifically speak to concerns about safety and their perception about that. So.
All right. And we're on to the last item, request for administrators to carry unused vacations with summer. Annie?
Yes, so just asking that, which is pretty standard for just about every employee here that's, that earns vacation time. So non-union employees to be able to use their vacation time into the summer, even though we enter a new fiscal year on July 1. So I'm asking that, that, that accrued and unused vacation, we have an agreement around that, that that's just extended out for the summer so that the administrators could use that time during the summer when it's much easier to take time than during the school year.
Terrific. And that does not require a vote, does it?
Actually, I would request that, yeah. Yeah, I'd just like your approval.
Okay. So do I hear any comments on this first before we motion to vote? Tara, Christine? Okay. Okay. This is a motion to request administrators to carry unused vacation through the summer. Do I hear a motion?
It's almost.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Now we're on to business manager reports. Chris, are you with us?
I am. And I was listening to your conversation about the phone thing. I actually have one of those computers here. We were discussing it at our school committee meeting. I'll tell you, you cannot open these things. I mean, it's, it's pretty strong. We, we had a number of people trying to do it the other night. You can't open them without the device. So it's, they're pretty secure.
Okay. Thank you.
So first up, I have the, the expense report. Looking at the report, you can certainly tell that the year is winding down. We're down to about $18,000 remaining in the budget. That amount is going to fluctuate really for the next couple of weeks. It's up higher than that now. But we have a number of expenses yet to go. It all depends on, on how expenses come in, how many purchase orders that are remaining. A lot of times someone will submit a purchase order and then the prices will change or the order gets canceled. And sometimes that purchase order is still hanging out there. We have to actually reach out to whoever, you know, sent it in or often, I know Mike DeBarge, the bookkeeper, has been reaching out now to the, the vendors themselves and saying, hey, was this order replaced? Do we have an outstanding bill? So there's a, a lot of movement really between, say, June 15th and July 15th with the budget, but it's, it's going to be hovering around that $18,000 markup, you know, plus or minus. We have another payroll as well. So that will, will hit it. But, you know, we will be closing the year, you know, above zero certainly. So there may be a, a small amount of money that goes back to the town. We'll kind of see how it settles out, but it, it's not going to be a huge amount. I think last year we gave, if we gave back 375,000, I believe it's, it's not going to be anywhere near that this year, but I can answer any questions anyone has on, on the regular budget expenses?
I don't have any questions. I see a couple of big outliers related to technology. I'm assuming that's related to pandemic-related technology expenditure. Actually, so I guess that is a question. Chris, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. Yeah, the, the tech is a combination of COVID-related tech expenses that we've seen and also we brought in Steve, our upcoming tech director. We brought him in at, on a consultant basis. And he was paid partially from the S R two grant and partially out of the regular budget. So the overage that you see is, is him hitting the regular budget as well as, you know, we, we bring in consultants regularly for the tech sector, you know, on, on the really elaborate things that need to be done. We bring them in to kind of assist us with it. So those are the reasons why they're higher than, than what was budgeted.
Great, thank you. Tara, Christine?
Nothing from me?
No. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Then we have the grants report. Again, winding down, you can see how the amount remaining for the most part is, is certainly going down, down even more. That $6.24 has been taken care of since I ran this report. Those S R, S R two and S R three grants can be carried over into the next year. So that's the plan as far as those go is to carry it over into the next fiscal year. Those two special ed grants, the 240 and the 252, that, those are amounts, they're actually called proportionate share, and that is to be used in other schools in the town if they request use of the funds. And so that's the amount that's remaining. Everything that's ours at this point has been fully spent. So it's just, just those amounts that, that remain out there. And circuit breaker, as you know, that's a revolving account. We can carry over roughly 160,000. I may have to do just a little tweaking. I need to calculate exactly how much we can carry into next year. It might be say 157,000 or something like that, and I'll do an expense transfer to bring us down to that balance. But it's always good to, to have that kind of funds in your back pocket in case a large special ed expense comes into the district. We can certainly cover it with that. And the last two grants, so the social emotional learning and early college support, we will see if there's any other expenses we can transfer to these grants and, and do the transfers by the end of the year.
Great, thank you. This may have come up as a suggestion last time, but it is getting extremely difficult to read, especially the fine print, given the length of the, the number, sheer number of grants that you've been able to secure, you and your team, Annie. It may be that we have to go to a second page. As much as I like things on one page for a quick scan, it just might be that out of practicality, we have to see it on two pages. So just planting the seed there that the time might come as we all get older and get gray hair that we're going to need to squint to see, to see these items.
Good news, we start a new fiscal year. And so that means you still have S R two and S R three because they carry over and we've already gotten a $50,000 grant, right, a continuation. But there, so you're correct, Humira, we'll make sure it doesn't get too small, but new fiscal year. I gotta get back at it and more.
The list will shrink?
Oh, yes. Yeah, because there, close all these out and then start again.
All right. Thank you for that. And Chris, the revolving account, accounts report?
Sure. And, and just as an aside, I will keep an eye on this report. It will be smaller to start the year, but as it grows and experience tells me it will, I will kind of keep an eye on it and make sure it doesn't get too small. So I'll go to two pages.
Great, thank you.
And with the revolving accounts report, these are all in pretty good shape. You know, lunch is, is certainly at a, at a nice high point. That'll cover us, you know, this again was, was kind of, you know, a different year with the free lunches all year, but you know, eventually, well, I, I don't believe, Anne, do you know, I don't think that has been carried over into next year.
No, there's no free lunch next year to my knowledge.
So, you know, I would anticipate that that balance will start to drop over the course of the year. And the other accounts, you know, student activity, obviously that goes up and down throughout the year depending on what activities are being paid for. That may decrease again for June 30th as we paid for a number of activities this month. And the, the rest of the accounts are in good shape too. You know, certainly it's, it's a good report to look at because it, it just shows that, you know, there's, there's more to the school budget than just the regular budget that you see. You know, there's these other accounts that we manage as well. And it's nice for you to see that, you know, the balances are there and they're, they're healthy balances. I don't know if anyone has any questions on those?
No questions from me. Christine, Tara?
I had one question, but not necessarily, I, I guess kind of sort of related. I know at one point years ago, we were talking kind of about the preschool and its finances and sustainability. And I know we had a really large class this past school year, and I guess maybe it's a question for Lauren next month, if I can remember it. Do we have enrollment numbers for the preschool yet? Just curious kind of where we stand compared to this past year?
Lauren will have exacts for you. But I will say, I think, I don't know that it's as robust as it is right now, but there's still a lot of interest. So I think enrollment is, continues to go strong, but she can certainly provide the exact numbers.
The preschool account has taken on more of the burden of the program. We used to have a grant that would pay for a good portion of the salaries and that kind of, it, it decreased year after year until it finally decreased to zero a couple of years ago. So yeah, it's, it's been taking on more of the burden at this point, but but you know, we'll keep on it certainly.
Great, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the next item in the agenda, school committee reports and discussions. Finance. So I have nothing to report. I'm not sure there was a meeting, Annie, and I'm hoping that when there is, you'll just give me a quick heads up because I do not have those scheduled in my calendar yet. Should I have something tentatively scheduled in for now?
No, and what I need to remember, and I know Joyce is here when we introduce her, this is 100% on me. So sometimes we'll get an email, other times it's just about checking the Me. So sometimes we'll get an email, other times it's just about checking the town website to see if one is scheduled. If there's a tri board scheduled or a FinCom scheduled, and I have to remember to go to the town website and do that. But Joyce may know when she's introduced and as our new goes on to the to the select board. Again, not her job, but she may be able to say at a school committee meeting, oh, yeah, if you marry Annie.
She's on the line now. Might we?
Yeah.
Ask her to, it might be a good time to ask her to unmute and do we need to make her a co-host to do that?
She is.
Oh, okay, terrific. Hi, Joyce, welcome.
Oops, she remuted herself. You remuted yourself, Joyce. You were unmuted for a second. And then you remuted. Oh, do I have to ask her to unmute? So she's co-host. Confused. Well, I'm confused by that. There she is. Hi, Joyce, we can hear you.
I'm not a cohort, that's for sure. Oh, good, thank you. I know that on Wednesday. I'm having, we're having a special meeting, but it has nothing to do with try.
Okay. Like a double check to Joyce.
Joyce, I think your connection is spotty, and we heard about half of what you said. And I think what you said was. There is a meeting coming up this week, but it has nothing to do with FinCom or finance.
Well, they're they're going, they're going to be there, but it only has to do with the water main. That we're putting in on South Maple Street. So it has nothing to do with any of the other boards.
Got it. And is there a regularity with which that?
I'm not sure if they're going to have other meet. With what? Why this? Let's see, where are we? Can you hear me still? Okay.
But we can hear you now.
Anything scheduled right now? And we don't have anything scheduled with a tri board at this point, but I informed.
Okay, great. Joyce, is there a way to be added to the tri board? Alerts and emails so that we see them coming rather than check the website for it?
Yes. Absolutely. If as soon as we determine that we're going to have a tri board meeting, we'll let you know.
Terrific, and maybe.
I'll make sure that you know. I'll contact Anne and and let her.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's just take a moment to recognize that you are. School board, select board representative. Thank you for serving as our select board representative. We welcome you and we look forward to seeing you at our monthly meetings.
Thank you so much. I just want to say at this point, it has been. You know, I've been on the select board for a number of years and fifteen years I did on school committee, and I surely have enjoyed working with. And a few years since she has these very accessible, always ready to give an answer. We love having her join our meeting, so.
Thanks, Joyce. Thanks. We're glad you're here.
Say she was a claims that you gave her. A real to our town. So thank her for being here.
Thank you, Joyce. Thanks, Joyce. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thanks.
When I'm on, when I'm on on these meetings and I have a question. Because I did have somebody ask me, is this an okay time just to ask? Somebody asked about a master doing our lawns, our our fields and lawns is. After we bought a lawnmower, is there some reason because was it more economical for a master to do that than? Hire another person to mow and do those things? I just wanted to have the right answer for that person without sending them to you.
So it's okay, Humira, Chris and I can tackle that, and I know.
Yes, please. While while we're all here, we may as well.
Okay, Chris, I think you're probably, no problem, you're probably. The short of it for me, and Chris can enhance the details here, is that we did evaluate what it would cost in terms of. And also keep in mind that the new fields at Hopkins Academy, this lawn mowing has turned into. Something, I mean, there's a reason that a master can can have an entire business around this. So it's it's labor intensive, a lot of time. And so even dedicating human resource hours, keep in mind, of course, we hire a person. We're also the benefit package. That goes towards your O P E V liabilities on the town side. And so we did evaluate the cost effectiveness and the best use of the personnel that we currently have. And freeing them up to actually be inside the buildings. And we don't have a very large custodial staff. It runs really lean. So, given that we had these two intersecting needs, I don't have a lot of staff to do this work. And we just expanded the amount of lawn we have to care for, the logical thing to do. And and Chris can speak just quickly about the the price point, including both schools, was really a no-brainer. At that point, because to do both schools was only nominally more than simply taking care of the Hopkins fields.
Yeah, it was. We did seek three separate prices for it and, you know, the the price. To do just the athletic fields. Originally, we had them doing the athletic fields because they were newly planted. And we wanted to make sure that there was no question of, well, you didn't mow the fields, you know, enough, or you mowed them too much. And, you know, and that's why the grass didn't grow. We wanted to make sure that we were protecting our investment by having, you know, the the people who did the fields also maintain them. And then it it just happened really that we, as Anne said, we have a limited number of custodians. They're also not easy to find sometimes. I mean, you know, that. People talk all the time about labor shortages, and that was one of those where we were just having a difficult time finding people. So we decided with the price that we got, we'd keep, you know, keep the number of staff that we had, and it was it was far less. Than what we would pay to hire a single custodian.
Thank you, Chris.
I I assumed that that was, I assumed that that was going to be the answer, but it's always nice for people to hear. If they go on to your school committee meeting to know why you, you know, did this procurement of an outside firm to do the. Lawns and things of that nature. Now, the question is, is that lawnmower, is that available for use for town town use if we need it?
I I don't see why not. I saw Anne was talking.
Imagine, yeah, I would imagine so. I I mean, it's yours. So I would imagine so.
Hours. It's hours, so.
Yeah, I would imagine so. Unless there was some policy prohibiting it.
Really, because it's under your budget, but. Yeah, okay. I'm just, you know, again, that would be something somebody would ask me, so I'm just kind of trying to get my answers and that would be it. So as being your liaison, you know, anything that you need, please contact me. I my cell phone is four one three four four one five four three five. You may call me at any time whatsoever. If you have any questions of us, and I will certainly try to keep you informed about when our tri meetings are are going to happen. And now I'm going to talk to Carolyn to just show we might be so we can all get together prior to September and and see what we can do.
Terrific. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to policy, this is Ethan and Christine.
So we have not had a chance to to. Meet. With Ethan being out of town and. What the things we have to discuss will probably take, you know, it's going to take more than a half an hour. So we need to reschedule the time for that.
Yeah, all right. Great, thank you. CES, Tara?
So I attended my first CES meeting right after our meeting last month in May. And it was informative and interesting, the first one for sure. They certainly do cover a lot of information. And so I had sent along the executive director reports for May and June along as well as. I believe I attached the brochure. A lot of emphasis was placed on this new brochure that they plan on disseminating. Really just to kind of provide information clarification and kind of articulate kind of the purpose of CES. And what they can provide. So maybe there's less ambiguity about what they do. So it was a really nice presentation. It's a really nice brochure if you haven't looked at it yet. It was quite nice. The other thing that stood out to me that I had written down to. Kind of mentioned, and I'll keep track of as more conversations. Happen going forward is that a lot of the focus on this next fiscal year is going to be. Put into building programming for online learning. So they're going to be building an online learning platform with focuses in particular in E S P training and E L A. E L L trainings. And so they, this is the very beginning stages. I think they're, you know, they're going to need to, you know, hire a specialist to help them build and implement this platform. But I'd be curious to see kind of how that might be beneficial to our district as far as E L L trainings and E S P trainings. Again, they would be, they would be online learning, which makes it much more accessible, which was, I think, the intent as well. And it's my understanding that they also intend to work with area districts just to find out where further needs might be. And any other interests that might be out there from districts on what kind of content would be useful. To have in those learnings. So more to come on that. It was a really interesting first meeting. Fortunately, we had an I emergency on the second meeting. So I wasn't able to make it, but I did send along their reports and I'll have a report for next month, too.
Great, thank you, Tara. I will look out for that brochure. Thanks for sending that along. And also great to hear that they have trainings for E L Ls and E S Ps. We. Will be, we so value ours, and it'll be really nice to invest in their ongoing education and development. So that they can continue being amazing personnel on our teams. Thanks for that. Fields and capital. Paul is not here. Annie, do you know of any updates?
Yeah, so you can expect for us to have an update on the proposed, the cost estimate. From Berkshire Design for Phase Two. You can expect to see that in July. And and then in July also, as I said, we anticipate having a proposal from Colliers about being owner's project manager. For implementing the facilities audit.
Great. And do we know when the CPA meeting is either in July or August?
It's actually in early September, which is why Chris has been in communication with Berkshire Design. We've made it really clear that we want to get that in front of you. That cost estimate in front of you all in July so that we can prepare the CPA application for August. And it's due in early September.
Wonderful. Does it make sense to give CPA folks a heads up that we're going to want to meet with them in September? Or I I wonder whether their their schedule ever becomes.
This is their schedule, Humira, just so you know. The EPA, how they run now is they've already posted. This is your deadline to have this turned in, and this is the meeting when you come to present it.
I see.
It's actually their schedule, and anybody who hasn't asked has to show up at the two times. So they timed it now. So they're prepared for town meeting.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Wonderful. I know one year, I don't know how many years ago it was, that we missed the date by just a hair. And so it's. I'm really glad that we are aiming to make all the deadlines. Terrific. Okay. We are at item seven, announcements. Christine, Tara, do you have any announcements to make?
No.
All right, I have just two. First, I would like to. Just give a sincere and warm condolences to Kathy Nagella. For the loss of Stanley Nagella. Stanley, in his own right, Mr. Nagella was a. Custodian at Hopkins Academy for many, many years. And I can say that I've always. Received warm smiles and just really kind, kind gentleman. He also lived on my street and would often wave as I rode my bike by or walked by. So very sad to hear about his passing and wanted to send Kathy and the rest of the family our deepest sympathies. The other, you know, on a totally unrelated note, I wanted to mention that Hadley Learns has some upcoming. Programming coming up. We had a a pride pizza party on my porch for June. We also have a July event. Coinciding with the week of Independence Day to study and evaluate. Frederick Douglass's famous eighteen fifty-two speech. And an August event where we've done this format before where people have the ability to read two. One of two books. The first is Heather McGee's The Sum of Us. She's a famous economist. Who's done some pretty amazing analysis. And the other is, his name is George Floyd. One Man's Life and the Struggle for Racial Justice by Robert Samuels and Toulouse Oloruniba. I started reading that book. It is pretty amazing. I highly recommend it. So the idea is people read the book and then come to. A Zoom to discuss one or the other and hear from others about the other one, the books that they didn't read. So I hope that people attend to learn more. Go to hadleylearns.com and you'll find an R S V P in the events section. Okay, that's it for my announcements. I think. We already welcomed the select board liaison. We have it an M A S C, M A S S joint conference. Annie, do you want to?
If the link is there, if a school committee member or members are interested in attending the conference, please let me know.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. And we have some action items in terms of approval of minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, do I hear a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. A P, approval of A P warrants for May twenty-twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of payroll warrants for May twenty-twenty-two. Do I hear a motion? All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Annie, you already received her summative evaluation. You already have a vote on the breakfast and lunch prices. We already voted on the Covid absences covered by S R. We already voted on the generous donation from the Fitzgibbons family. We already voted on the textbooks back to the publisher. As well as the policy, K F and K F R, as well as the early release days from H G S. So I think we are all set there. And the next meeting dates are, let's see, it's one actually meeting date. July twenty-sixth at five P M for the policy subcommittee and five thirty for the regular subcommittee.
And just to be on notice, as Chris said, some of the things we'll be discussing in policy subcommittee, I will be looking to see. To find a date that Ethan and Chris are available. We need longer than thirty minutes, so. We have some athletic policies and we'll want some parent input, and so we'll be looking to schedule the policy meetings separately. So it'll just be school committee at five thirty.
So that's on a Tuesday. Just wanted to make sure that that was intentional.
No, that's that's not intentional at all. I only give you four calendars a year. And I can't read the one I have. No, so it's supposed to be the twenty-fifth. Thank you. Good catch.
Oh, good catch.
Thank you. Not intentional.
Okay, so see everyone back here. Okay, so see everyone back here, July twenty-fifth at five thirty for the regular school committee meeting.
Perfect.
Terrific. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.